Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, School Board Regular Meeting. Please rise for the presentation of the colors. Tonight, we have Matanzas Army JROTC Cadet Captain Arabella Allen, Cadet Captain Landon Smith, Cadet Sergeant Braden Vaughn, Cadet Staff Sergeant Dominic Guerra, and we have Advisor, Major Charles Mallard. We'll now have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the National Anthem.
Oh, say that you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous spights, for the rivers we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the flame that lit through the dark night, was still there, oh, say, as the stars spangled that new yent' way! O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave!
May retire the cutters. They may be seated. We will now have our roll call.
Dani Nieves, FBC Representative.
Johani Strong, Matanzas High School Board Representative.
Lauren Ramirez, District Five.
Janie Ruddy, District Three.
Derek Bars, District One.
Kristi Chong.
Will Furry, District Two, present.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, so we have here, first up, we have two point, is there anything for two point zero one? Okay, so two point zero two, we have a special announcement, National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, presenter, Torren Wilson. Welcome, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you to our board members, I'm just glad to be able to be here to stand in front of you, to present a topic I think that we should all bring awareness to, so this is the proclamation that I want to read from you. My name is Torren Wilson, I'm a License Mino Health Counselor here for the Flagler County Schools. Resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognize January two thousand and twenty-five as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, whereas human trafficking is the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of forced labor of sexual servitude, and whereas human trafficking is a thirty-two billion dollar a year global criminal enterprise and is a crime as well as civil and human rights violation, and an estimated twenty-five million people are currently victims of human trafficking for both sex and labor, and whereas human trafficking traffickers prey on their victims by promising a life of hope and greater opportunity while delivering only enslavement instead of delivering people to better lives, traffickers unjustifiably profit from the labor and toil of their victims, and whereas human trafficking is a modern form of the oldest and most barbaric type of exploitation, and we proclaim it has no place in our nation or our community, and whereas more awareness and education are crucial to eradicating human trafficking in our communities state and nation, and whereas Flagler County Advocates Alliance comprised of Flagler County Sheriff's Office Victims Advocate, Flagler Beach Police Department Victim Advocate, State Attorneys Victim Advocates, the Seventh Judicial Circuit Flagler, and Family Life Centers are working together to increase public understanding of this problem and mobilize community efforts to end human trafficking, and now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that we hereby proclaim the month of January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month and urge all citizens of Flagler County to become a part of the community response to end human trafficking and to send the message that this crime would not be tolerated in our community. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida at the regular opening public meeting therefore held on this particular day of the eighteenth, I'm not sure if I was supposed to read that, but here we are, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Okay, so our next special announcement is two point zero three, National Stalking Awareness Month, Mr. John Finelli presenting. Welcome, Mr. Finelli.
Good evening Chairman Furry, School Board Superintendent Moore, tonight I will be presenting a resolution to the Board on National Stalking Awareness Month. We know that stalking is a dangerous and highly inappropriate practice, and the best way to eradicate it is to bring awareness and education to it, so thank you for putting forth this resolution for us tonight. The resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing January two thousand and twenty-five as National Stalking Awareness Month, whereas under the laws of all fifty states, the US territories, the District of Columbia, and the federal government stalking is a crime, and whereas up to seven point five million people are stalked in a one-year period in the United States, and the majority of the victims are stalked by someone they know, and whereas many stalking victims lose time from work and experience serious psychological distress and lost productivity at a much higher rate than the general population, and whereas many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs, and obtaining protection orders, and whereas many stalkers use technologies such as cell phones, global positioning systems, cameras, and spyware to monitor and track their victims, and whereas there is a need for great public awareness about the nature, criminality, and potential lethality of stalking, and whereas criminal justice systems can enhance their response to stalking by regular training and assertive investigation and prosecuting of the crime, and laws and public policies must be continually adapted to keep pace with new tactics used by stalkers, and whereas communities can better combat stalking by adopting multidisciplinary responses by teams of local agencies and organizations, and by providing more and better victim services, and whereas Flagler County Advocates Alliance comprised of Flagler County Sheriff's Office Victim Advocates, Flagler Beach Police Department Victim Advocate, State Attorneys Victim Advocate, Seventh Judicial Circuit Flagler, and Family Life Center are working together to increase public understanding of this problem and mobilize community efforts to end stalking, and now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that we hereby declare the month of January as National Stalking Awareness Month in Flagler County, and applaud the efforts of the many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizations, and private sector supporters for their efforts in promoting awareness about stalking. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida at the regular open public meeting thereof held on the seventeenth day of December, two thousand and twenty-four, signed Chairman Will Furry and Superintendent of Flagler Schools LaShaka Moore. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Finelli. Okay, we will move on to our next special announcement, two point zero four, National Mentoring Month presented by Ms. Teresa Rizzo, welcome, Ms. Rizzo.
Good evening Board, Chairman Furry, Superintendent Moore, mentoring is so important in our school district, the Flagler County Education Foundation has been honored to train hundreds of mentors this year that are impacting our students. A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing January two thousand and twenty-five as National Mentoring Month, whereas January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to recruit quality mentors to provide additional networks of support for young people, and whereas Flagler Schools recognizes the contributions of volunteer mentors who guide young people to succeed in their education, career, and well-being, and whereas mentoring programs like the African-American Mentoring Program Take Stock in Children and Reading Pals make our state and community stronger by enabling impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks, and whereas mentors can help young people explore careers and build skills to achieve higher lifetime economic outcomes through activities like helping them set career goals, write a resume, practice for an interview, connect them to opportunities, and more, and whereas research has demonstrated that mentoring programs have a significant positive impact on a variety of academic achievement measures, including truancy, absenteeism, scholastic efficacy, and engagement, school-related misconduct, and peer support, and whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and relationship growth for young people, and whereas with a mentor, youth facing risk are more likely to enroll in college, less likely to start using drugs, and more likely to volunteer regularly in their community, and whereas while one in three young people still grow up without a mentor, demonstrating the need for additional awareness and resources for mentoring programs, and whereas National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit caring adult mentors in Flagler County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that January is recognized as National Mentoring Month, adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida at the regular open public meeting thereof held on the seventeenth day of December, two thousand and twenty-four, signed William Furry Chair, School Board of Flagler County, and signed LaShaka Moore Superintendent Flagler Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo, for that. So we will now move on to our spotlight section, and we will start at three point zero one, Superintendent Strategic Plan Spotlight, Ms. Moore.
Good evening, I will yield my time for closing comments since we do have Ms. Renee Kirkland that will also give a spotlight.
Okay, so we have our next spotlight is the Flagler County Education Foundation. Welcome back, Ms. Rizzo.
Good evening again, thank you again for the opportunity to spotlight the Flagler County Education Foundation this evening, and recognition of National Mentoring Month as outlined in the resolution just read earlier, we would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to all of our mentors serving in Flagler Schools, especially our Take Stock in Children mentors, who will be honored at the Flagler County Education Foundation Mentoring Appreciation Event this January. With over eighty-five students participating in this Take Stock in Children program, we are fortunate to have over eighty-five mentors who truly make a difference in the lives of some of our most at-risk students. These dedicated individuals meet with their mentors, mentees, weekly, but their commitment goes far above and beyond those meetings. Their guidance and unwavering support have a profound impact, ensuring these students stay on track, graduate high school, and reach their fullest potential. We are incredibly grateful for their compassion and the life-changing role that they play. Continuing to align with Superintendent Moore's diploma plush initiative, our classroom-to-careers programs have been moving full steam ahead. Highlights include the Passport to a Healthier You, that was at Renfire Elementary, as well as career fairs at both middle schools with over fifty-four vendors who showcase career opportunities that are available right here in Flagler County for our students. Looking ahead, we are excited about our countywide career fair for eleventh and twelfth graders at the Palm Coast Community Center on February twenty-eighth. This is a new feat for us, and we're excited about it, nervous and excited, I'd like to say. Lastly, I want to spotlight our Feeding Flagler's Future Program, which began last year thanks to the vision of our very own plant services employee, Mr. Jeff Moreau, who is here with us tonight. Jeff approached us with the desire to support the neediest families in our schools during the holidays. As a result of his hard work, we were able to feed sixty families of six or more last year with a hot, full-course meal. That includes turkey and all the fixings and dessert. These families did not have to cook this meal, it was provided for them ready to go. This is our second year of the program, our goal is to feed over seventy families with a complete holiday meal. It only takes fifty dollars to provide a meal for one family. To support this meaningful campaign, you can scan the QR code on the screen, or also visit us at our website at FlaglerEdFoundation.org. I want to give a huge shout out to Jeff for bringing this to our office and to our attention. We are honored that he came to us and that we're able to make this happen for him, and for those wonderful families. Thank you again for your time, your support of the Education Foundation.
Can we get a picture? What a lovely update, and we're ready for our next one, FTC Health Literacy Grant, Ms. Renee Kirkland to present, welcome, Ms. Kirkland.
Thank you. Good evening Board Chair, Board Superintendent Moore, we are here tonight to officially and publicly thank the Florida Blue Foundation for a five thousand dollar grant for the implementation of health literacy programs to our adult education students. This grant integrates health and nutrition information into Flagler Technical College's curriculum. The focus is to help students acquire the knowledge, literacy skills, and resources that will help them navigate the medical system and make informed health decisions. More than twenty-five thousand eight hundred adult learners from programs throughout the state of Florida have benefited from this initiative since two thousand and nine. Limited English language and literacy skills have a significant impact on one's health, and according to the National Adult Assessment and Literacy, fourteen percent of Americans cannot comprehend basic health information. The study indicates that health literacy is especially prevalent among adults who did not complete high school, with forty-nine percent having below basic health literacy, and foreign-born adults whose English is their second language. People who lack health literacy skills are much more likely to use medications incorrectly, have at least one chronic illness, spend more time in the hospital, and are four times more likely to have poor health than people who have higher health literacy skills. The potential for cost savings and improved outcomes is significant, and so we publicly thank the Florida Blue Foundation for this grant to help us help our students.
Thank you, Ms. Kirkland, and thank you, Florida Blue, for the generosity. So now we will move on to approval of minutes, I'd like a motion to approve four point zero one through four point zero two.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Chong, and a second by Mr. Bars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. So Superintendent Moore, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, I do request that we pull item seven point zero one, the imagined financials, and we will bring that item back to you at a later board meeting.
Very good, I just need a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item seven point zero one.
I also have an item that I would like to pull, seven point zero three is, I've submitted Form Nine for Conflict of Interest regarding check numbers three two eight one seven two two four two five zero zero two eight seven and three two eight two seven four to be voted on separately.
Okay, so then we will move that to an action item, so we will one, pull seven point zero one, and in the finance consent of tonight's agenda, seven point zero three will be removed or moved to the action. So do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Bars, second by Ms. Ramirez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously, we will move forward with this agenda. That moves us forward now to public comment, do we have anybody signed up for public comment this evening? Okay, so we will close. So we will close public comment and move into our consent agenda. Now, just for the public to know, these will move quite quickly, but I just want to assure you that all these items have been workshopped at a prior meeting, and all board members have gotten all the answers and information they need to make a conscious vote on these items. We will be voting on them as blocks to expedite the meeting. So to start off, we will start with consent, which is 7.02 through 7.08 minus 7.01, which was pulled, and 7.03 that was moved to action. I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Did you have a question, Attorney Delaney?
Yes, I have a little trouble. Yeah, sorry. I thought I heard 7.08. I think the agenda goes to 7.09.
I apologize. That was my eyes crossing there. So let me just restate that motion. We're going to do consent of finance to 7.02 through 7.09 with 7.01 pulled from the agenda and for 7.03 to be moved to action. Need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
So a motion from Ms. Chong?
Second.
A second from Mr. Bars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none. These pass unanimously. We will now move on to academic services consent. We have Items 9.01 through 9.08. Need a motion to approve these items?
Chairman, motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bars.
A second.
Second by Ms. Ramirez. Oh, Ms. Ruddy?
Ruddy.
A second by Ms. Ruddy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, we will move forward. So next, we'll move on to operational services. 10.01 through 10.02, need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion from Mr. Bars.
Second.
And a second from Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none. We will pass that unanimously. Now, we're at Human Resource Services, 11.01 through 11.04. Need a motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Chong.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ramirez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Okay. So now we will go to our item that was moved to finance action 7.03. So Ms. Ruddy, you said you wanted to pull that for a reason?
Correct. This is the vendor payments. I submitted Form 9 in accordance with the Florida law. I have a potential conflict of interest with check numbers 328172 and 328274 paid out to N2Y LLC and check number 242500287 paid out to Timothy Ruddy.
Okay, so these are personal, potential personal conflict of interest. So you're, are you abstaining from the vote?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Are we in compliance with that? Ms. Delaney? Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Ruddy, for bringing that to everybody's attention. So we will then move forward after that disclosure. I need a motion to approve 7.03.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Bars. A second by Ms. Ramirez. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Okay. So we now move on to our next action item for number 19, establishing board liaison for iFlagler.
Yes, board, at the reorganization meeting, we failed to identify a board liaison for iFlagler/Rise Up, and so we need to establish that at this time.
I don't mind taking it unless somebody else wants to.
I just have a clarifying question. You said iFlagler/Rise Up, they're all-encompassing?
Yes, Rise Up, our alternative program falls under iFlagler.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Chong has volunteered herself. So should we vote this in to the record? Okay. So I need a motion to approve. Ms. Chong taking over the liaison for iFlagler and Rise Up.
I move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Ruddy.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Ramirez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Okay, so that now moves us to our second public comment of the meeting. Is there anybody scheduled for public comment? Okay. We then close public comment, and we will move on to board member requests. Do we have any board member requests at this time? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. And right now, we don't have any upcoming board discussions to review, so we will move right into closing comments. We'll start down at the end of the dais.
All right. Thank you again so much for having us. FPC is doing great. Just some new updates. Our SGA is starting something called All Stars, which is actually really amazing thing where they're doing a competition within all of the clubs and organizations within the school to attend as many school events as possible. So you would get like a point for going to a baseball game, a soccer game, any events like that to help boost morale within our school. Again, SGA also has lots of other events, such as the Dinner with Santa. And of course, the Starlight Parade had a lot of people from FPC there that went well. More on awards. Three of our JRTC cadets won Flight Academy scholarships, where they get to go to any college of their choice and get their private pilot's license over the summer for completely free. And that's Jasmine Vikowskis, Jillian Rivera, and Zoe Pascal. For our formality singers, we do have one student that is, will be attending All State. And for our thespians, they achieve superior and excellent ratings, and they have two upcoming shows, one which is student-directed and the other that is entirely student-written. And also just our assistant principal did just win the Assistant Principal of the Year Award, Ms. Kramarotis. And Mr. Giagastino won the Teacher of the Year Award.
So, good evening, fellow board members of the 2024-2025 school year. First, I would like to thank you all for allowing me the privilege to sit with you tonight and represent Matanzas High School. In recent news, our amazing principal was nominated as Principal of the Year last week for her outstanding leadership and command of the ship. Congratulations to Ms. Bozeman. Two of our students were presented awards in recognition of their academic endeavors. Congratulations, Anna Hartz, for being presented the Daughters of the American Revolution's Award, and Megan Ree for being selected as Flagler County's Alternate Sunshine State Scholar for 2025. Our amazing chorus and band Pirates performed in a multitude of concerts the past couple of weeks, and our senior shirts are now available for purchase in the lower spot. Our athletic department has been doing very well as our basketball team improved the record 7 to 1 last week. And two of our Lady Pirates, Jordan Cruz and Ryan Parkinson, were recently noted for their superior strength in weightlifting. Our clubs and programs have been making a prominent influence at our school. Our ACE program handed out ACE pops, which are essentially ice pops, to all students who are challenging themselves in the program this year. Our interact club had been collecting unopened toys to donate to children for their holiday season. And finally, our key club hosted their annual Breakfast with Santa and had an amazing turnout. Over Thanksgiving break, 12 of our cheerleaders were invited to cheer in Orlando at the happiest place on earth, aka Disney World. In upcoming news, I am pleased to mention that our construction sites are finally coming to a close, and we can expect all buildings to be available very, very soon. And the corridor will be wrapping up on Friday, January 10th, when we return from break. And make sure to keep your radio on for a chance to hear our very own Pirates, who are invited to talk about certain topics on WNZF. Finally, this week is our Winter Spirit Week for all of our faculty and staff to participate in and to help commemorate our final days before break. Matanzas will be hosting our Staff vs. Students basketball game this Friday, December 20th. This concludes my closing comments for tonight until next year.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for the Passport to a Healthier You from the Ed Foundation. I wanted to just let the community know that are watching or watching the recording this program, as well as all of them. They're fantastic for the little ones, so thank you, Ed Foundation. It's really just, I think it's gonna just help these little ones grow and see like what they could be and what they want to be when they grow up. So we are really doing great things here. Our SAC committees, School Advisory Council committees at all of our campuses are doing fantastic. And I did want to give a shout out to Wadsworth, Old Kings, and Matanzas. They have between 18 to 20-plus parents, guardians, and for the high school, students on those boards. And so I just want the public to know that if you have the opportunity to go to any of these SAC meetings, they help develop school improvement plans, build partnerships, help with the budget allocation. So I'm just, I'm very proud of all of our campuses. But I did have to just give those three a gold star for the participation that I saw on the list. So awesome job. Also, you know, Flagler's doing a really great job with dual enrollment, early college, ACE, IB, and the CTE programs, starting as early as elementary, transitioning into middle school, and then, of course, high school. So communication has been improving. And I know the team here, we've been doing a really great job, and I'm just really proud of everything that I've been seeing. And thank you all for everything. Community members just know that we're here for you. So, you know, you may not be here tonight, sitting in these chairs, but you are welcome to always call us and email us, and we'll do what we can to partner you with the correct, appropriate person. So thank you so much. Have a good night.
So many good things. So a couple of items. It's always interesting what gets published in the newspaper or our media regarding the school board meetings or workshops. We had a pretty thick agenda, I think, two workshops ago or something. But the main topic that came out of that workshop that seemed to make the most press was related to the school building projections. What I want to clarify is that school building projections and diving deep into this are a clearly calculated process that cannot be inflated or swayed by us in the school system. It is a common calculation throughout the state. And so I've heard a lot of folks say, well, we have to be at capacity. We can't judge by the car rider line. Can't judge by one school, and rightly so. So right now, we are not at capacity. And the projections show that, based upon current trends, it would take approximately, I think it was 10 years, to hit that capacity number. If that's not something you're happy with, then those capacity calculations have to be changed at the state level. So even with the current conquerables, we are not at capacity at any one of our schools. There is, however, a minor imbalance, and that's something that we will be watching and ensuring that our students aren't overcrowded in one particular area. As Ms. Moore had stated, that is something we will probably have to deal with. I've also received several outreach items from community members, and I really appreciate that. It gives me an ability to research some of the items that are most concerning to you. There was a brave soul who came up and asked about moving public comments and also reached out via email. And you may all have the same questions. Why are public comments placed at a certain time in the agenda? One thing that we discovered was that public comments on just open comments aren't necessarily required. We are required to have public comments on specific agenda items. So we are being very transparent. And I would urge you all to think about not just your family's schedule, but also the schedules of other folks. Not everybody has the same schedule. I came, you know, I'm a mom, three kids, very busy, and I understand that, right? So we also have students and teachers that come up here for recognition, and moving that to later in the agenda would impact their day and time. So it's not going to be ideal for everybody, but we are doing the best to accommodate as much as we can. There's also been quite a stir during the cold weather regarding our bus notifications and sometimes some acrimonious comments online. I will say that I urge you all to double-check how you have set up your notifications on your app. The app requires you to accept notifications. It also requires you to set the radius for which you're alerted. And the transportation department is working really hard. I've reached out to them about when there are breakdowns for buses, there can be some pain points in getting all of those names converted quickly so that there are timely notifications. And so they are working on identifying what those failures are and those pain points. Finally, as we close, I believe, is it the 79th day of school? 79th? We're also facing the 83rd school shooting this year in Madison, Wisconsin. And instead of offering my thoughts and prayers, which goes without saying, our parents and students are asking for action. In my capacity, I can share my voice tonight. Gun violence is the number-one cause of death among our children outside of school. According to the U.S. Centers of Diseases Control, and in our soc- excuse me, society, we're more comfortable with images of violence than we are of images of a kiss or caress between two partners. And this is backed by studies, according to the American Psychology Association, and provides clear data about the imagery of violence desensitizing our youth. And according to Sandy Hook's Promise Research, homes wrongly assume that their children don't know where their guns are or how to gain access to them. So tonight, while our lawmakers stall, even when the July 2024 Pew Research shows that 58% of us in the United States support tighter gun controls, I ask you to take action in the following ways. Parents hug your child and children. Remind them that they are valued, they're wanted, and they belong. And today, secure your firearms. Students, I ask you to see that peer sitting by themselves and talk to them and continue to see something and say something. As a community, I ask we show tolerance and acceptance to those who are different, quote-unquote. If we do not fill children with love and belonging, they will find anger and hate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things related to our community. I want to talk about some of the outreach and positive things that we've seen over the last month, especially this past week with the Starlight Parade. I just want to thank, where's Don and his group back there? I just want to thank them for what they've done. They've done a fantastic job of showcasing the good work that our school district is doing and the involvement that we're having within the district. So I really appreciate that. Keep fighting that good fight of us working to showcase the great work that our school district is doing and all the lights that were on that bus. I mean, I think we probably should have won, but you know, that's just a whole nother, whole nother story. Our community involvement, again, I also want to recognize a letter that we all received today goes back to the Veterans Day Parade again. And I want to give a shout out that was listed in this parade by Chief Brannon from the Planning Committee from the Veterans Day Parade. I want to thank our Superintendent LaShaka Moore, Mr. Dave Freeman, and Marcus Sanfilippo for the work that you've done to showcase Flagler schools. And I mentioned in a board meeting the other day, when we talk about Flagler schools, it doesn't need to be, oh, Flagler schools, it's Flagler schools. And you all are helping to make sure that we are Flagler schools and we're being recognized as being a great school district, a great opportunity for our children to be in and to learn and to excel and move forward into the future. And by the work that you're doing in our community... And by the works that you're doing in our community is paying off, and I ask that we just continue to do those great works that we're doing inside the community. So thank the three of you, based off of the letter. And I had a conversation with Chief Brannon today, and I told him that I was going to recognize you all publicly, not just by this letter. So thank you all very much for that. Again, the things, and I'm just going to touch on a couple of things, and it has to do basically with our technical college today, just because I spent several hours at FTC this past week with Chris and Renee and going and spending time with them and looking at the programs that they have to prepare students who are not necessarily going to college. Our other programs that we have, and she mentioned ESOL earlier, I just really see the great work that they're doing and the relationships that we'll be able to connect them with in our community, from the transportation industry to other organizations that are willing to help these programs move forward. So I really appreciate the work they're doing. And also, we got to be able to spend some time this past week with Patrick Giuliani, Lieutenant with Palm Coast Fire Department, who is one of the EMS instructors. And we have about eight high school students who are in that class and being able to spend time with them and preparing them for the next step in their careers as they move forward. And then the last thing that I will say, you know, we participated in Shop with the Cop, Shop with the Heroes, but this past week, we also had Shop with the Cop. And again, we're reaching our community at a level of students and families who may not have a Christmas or the holidays that they're going to potentially have that others may have. But what our community has done by coming together, what our Sheriff's Office has done and worked together with Flagler County Schools is unmatched. And I just want to recognize the work and the collaboration that those agencies or the school district and the agency has had. So thank you very much.
I was also praying for Madison, Wisconsin. Thank you, Janie, for those comments. Yeah, just so many things could just be stopped just in our home, just by talking to our children. We, we had those conversations again this week. You see something, you say something, you know, just, just being there to let your children talk to you. What are your conversations? You know, what's going on at school? So continuing to pray for them. And yeah, just want to say thank you also to those who helped put together the Starlight Parade. That was a good time. I hope that everyone's getting a chance to just take part in something in the community at Christmas time. We all, I know we all had a lot of fun doing that. I think it was the first time in about four years or so that the parade came back. So looking forward to that again in the following years. And just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I hope you get to rest and spend time with family and just, you know, take a break before we start another new year. Thank you.
Yes, I share a lot of the same comments that my colleagues have mentioned tonight. And yes, for the Madison families, my thoughts and prayers are with you. And I also want to thank the speakers that came up today to bring awareness to, you know, the human trafficking and stalking, the terrible situation that that is. And, and also for, for the mentoring. You know, there's a positive side of this community that is so important is, is, you know, being there for a student that, or just anybody in the community that just needs a little extra boost, maybe needs just a little bit of extra guidance to get where they need to go. So grateful for those who participate in our mentoring. And the, I want to thank our board. You're, you know, you're starting to see an example of servant leadership as you heard from their comments today. They were out at the parades, at the Shop with the Cop and everything else. And, you know, this is, that is another part of this job is being available for our community. And I want to commend them all for their participation in these community events. And, and, you know, and with the parade, the, you know, it's, it's these things that sometimes there's not an expectation, but when they see that bus coming down the road and they see their, their school staff and school board high-fiving them, handing out candy canes, I could see the smiles and on their face, and that in itself is a huge reward for the time and effort. So I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and we won't be reconvening till after the new year, so, and a Happy New Year. And I'll pass it off to Superintendent Moore.
Good evening. Happy 78th day of school. On Thursday, we will be celebrating the 80th day of school. And so I ask our board members, our staff, our families, our students to participate by dressing up in your snazzy 80s gear and tag us so that we can post you and we can celebrate together as, as a school district. One of the things I count up to every day, making each and every day special. This is not in any means saying, oh, you know, hurrying to the end of the year, but really about making each day count and make each day special. And so today, we celebrate the 78th day of school. Lots of great things happening. I want to just showcase that we had a job fair this week, last week. My weeks run into each other. These last couple of weeks have been extremely busy, really helping to bring in additional individuals to Flagler Schools. But outside of the job fair, you can always look on the Flagler Schools website to the openings that we have here in the district. I want to thank Ms. Rizzo and all the work that she and her team continue to do to support Flagler Schools, specifically around our mentorship. And I want to bring awareness to our College and Career Fair that it's going to happen in February. You want to be there for this event. This is going to be state of the art. It's going to be an amazing event. I know she's shaking her head every time as, as lay on the pressure. But really an opportunity to connect our students to colleges, but connect them to careers and showcasing many careers that are here in Flagler County. We do a great job of educating our students, and we want them to come back and live and work here in Flagler County. So this event is going to be a great event that is going to be open to our 11th and 12th graders. But if you are a family that maybe your child is being educated at home or your child is at a private school, come and be a part of it. You can go onto the website. You'll be able to get some more information about that College and Career Fair because it's going to be great for our students. We are going to end this week going into winter break. And I say to families to enjoy your time there the next two weeks with your children at home. We will miss them greatly. It will be a great opportunity as we come back into the new year to remind them of the Student Code of Conduct, as well as the expectations for, for school. There is a misunderstanding that the school district is completely shut down during this time, but there are many people that will still be working while our students are at home. And so if you are a family and you are in need of something, you are in need of services, please continue to reach out to us. You can reach out to me. I will be here, as well as our staff members. Reach out. We will not just be closed down, but we are here still to meet the needs of our students. The best part of my job, what makes me the best me, is opportunities to be with our students and to love and care for them and educate them. So if there's something that you need during this time, please reach out because some of us are definitely still here. Have a great night and again, Happy 78th day of school.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore. This meeting is now adjourned.